I like being on its own. Good job, Phyllis.
All right.
Can we call the meeting to order at 6:03?
Wow.
Welcome, Phyllis.
Give a little bit of power.
First, we have a wonderful group of BAKI students to do the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Snyder would like to say some words after they do the pledge, and then I will give them their certificates for being here this evening. So, BAKI students, if you could all come right up here in front of Mrs. Kennedy.
Oh, wow. Is it the whole class?
Thank you so much. All right, you ready? Whenever you're ready, start the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you kids just turn over here to your parents? You'll take a beautiful picture of you.
Okay, all right. You want to hand it to them back?
I'll do it after he speaks.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. All right. Mr. Snyder, would you like to say a few things, and then I'll give them their certificates?
Absolutely. So, you're gonna have to stand right there just for a minute, okay? You're good to go. So, here we have thirteen of the thirty-four, third, fourth, and fifth grade girls who will be part of Girls on the Run this spring. Those, uh, that program is going to start actually next week and the week after. And it's a great program, specific to girls. We have some coaches that are here too, some of our staff. We have Mrs. McCaskill, Mrs. Flanders, Mrs. Regan, and Mrs. Campbell, she's over here. And we also have Mrs. Dobson, who is a coach this spring. So, these girls will comprise three different teams. They will work on different lessons one day after, or two days every week after school. And they will start literally running, and ultimately sometime later, I believe it's in June, there will be a 5K event, not necessarily a race, but a journey that they will all build towards. So, as they're working together, they will, they'll get to know each other better, they'll learn some great things, um, together about self-esteem and some other things. It's a wonderful program, but they will also literally be training together to run a 5K event. And the really nice connection that we have here is that there's a picture of a brand-new book. It's actually being released on April 2nd. It's called Her Fearless Run. It's a children's picture book written by author Kim Chaffey, who lives in London area, New Hampshire, but visited BAKI school last week as part of our Read Across America event for our kids. So, she visited all of our third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms. But the story is a biography of Catherine Switzer's journey in the Boston Marathon. She was the first woman in nineteen sixty-seven to actually run the Boston Marathon with official race numbers. And so, what the kids learned was her journey and some of the experiences that she had kind of as a groundbreaking experience for a woman at the Boston Marathon. And what's really special is that our kids actually got to meet her, the author, Kim Chaffey, who herself is training and will, for the Boston Marathon, will run that April fifteenth. So, her book is coming out April 2nd. Our students had a special preview of that, but I think it's a perfect tie-in to what they're doing with Girls on the Run as well. So, we thought that it would be a great group to come and represent our school by reciting the pledge here tonight. And I think they did an admirable job, and I look forward to maybe running a little bit with you ahead of when you actually do your 5K. All right? You'll have to hold me to that, okay? So, Mr. Ambrose, Superintendent Ambrose has a certificate for each one of you.
If I want to take pictures, this angle might be the best way to do that. First, use Isabel Cook. Good luck on your 5K. Maya Dawson.
Maya's coming too. Maya's.
I'm Maya. Maya, come here, I'll take you. Pearl Dowell. Good luck on your run. Johnny Eaton. Juliana Fresco. Alexis Michelle. Allison Rogers. Lily Trussell. Lexi Sosnowski. Juliette Teberge. It was fifty-fifty, right? Allison, oh, Allison's on here. Well, I can't tell you how grateful I am that you all came today. Do you need some? Sorry, Mrs. Kennedy. All right, thank you very much. If anyone didn't get one, eight, one, two, one, one. Mr. Snyder, can you do those? All right, great, thanks.
Maya.
Yes, now it's a nomination chair. Yep. Okay.
I know why Phyllis isn't here. I know why Phyllis is over there.
Yes.
Good times. I didn't do it myself, you wanted to touch base. I mean, Alexis, I really should be a mentor to all of you.
Yeah, I took note of your, uh, email.
Okay, good, that's fine.
I did read through all of them.
Things will come up, I'm sure we'll have some kids.
Yeah.
We get to know each other. It's clever, you know, I don't know what to do, I just tell you what you can do.
Okay, we can begin the board organizational meeting. Is there a nominate, is there a motion for a nomination for a school board chair? Yes, Mr. Heath?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Broderick as the school board chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, any discussion, any discussion?
Oh, any discussion, sorry.
Thanks for stepping up, Keith.
Yes, yes, it's a very difficult job, and we said...
Yeah, he has to deal with me every week, I mean, my god.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's...
Thank you.
All right, Peter.
I have my resignation ready.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to make a motion for vice chair Larry Heath, please.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight, four, three.
I'd like to make a motion for Pam Brown as vice chair.
Second.
All in favor? No, I'm sorry, I can't do that. I mean, I can, but no, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I need to count that again. One, two, three, four, okay. Okay, did you get the first one, Phyllis? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, that was my motion, seconded by Ellie. Ellie voted affirmative, Larry voted affirmative, I voted affirmative. Jamie, Jim, motion did not carry.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Action on the minutes.
Are there other, are there a few other officers that need to be elected as well? Point that school board...
Oh, well, you know, I don't think we have to do that for you, do we? I didn't think we had to do that for you.
Move the school clerk.
Oh, well, okay, we're so used, I'm sorry. Guess who it's gonna be? I'm sorry, that was my mistake. Okay, school clerk, motion?
Move that Phyllis be, uh, school clerk.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Thank you very much, Phyllis.
That's unanimous, okay. Also, the, um...
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
I also move that Phyllis be, uh, school treasurer.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aren't you lucky? Okay, I think that takes care of it. Okay. Now, we, I think we go to the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Changes, suggestions, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, Phyllis, and did you see who?
Yes.
Larry, yeah. For those of you who aren't usually here, poor Phyllis is looking down, trying to write, and trying to see who's going on, and so I always kind of help her out there if I can. Okay, manifest. I'll go sign it and send it on. We, I believe, have one nomination.
Uh, no, there are no nominations.
I thought we had, no?
There are resignations, though.
Okay, my mistake.
Any communications?
It was the resignations, all right.
Communications?
Uh, yeah, under communication, we had no nominations. I thought it said one, it said N-O-N-E. And I taught biology, not English. And now, we do have some resignation, a couple.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'll plug it back in, I was trying not to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, could I hold on one second? We have a new member. I'm sorry, Jamie, I meant to put that down there. Representative from Newton, Jamie Fitzpatrick.
Thank you.
Say hello. Our condolences. Probably discuss that. So, he will be joining. He has been sworn in, I got the email, so we're all set there.
Okay. We have resignations this evening. Brianna Spachuli, special education teacher at the Memorial Elementary School. Michael Gannon, teacher at the middle school. Angelica Mahoney, special education building coordinator at the high school. And I also wanted to let the board and public know that, um, that Michelle Croto has announced her resignation from the district effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Croto has been the, uh, with the district for two years, serving as the business administrator in SAU seventeen during a time of change and growth in the SAU. And I do want to mention that the board would like to thank her for her work in strengthening communications between the school board and the budget committee, and improving transparency in the budget process. She worked hard on redesigning and improving the budget process, including developing a new budget binder for school board with the various supporting materials and five years of historical account detail. I just want to express my thanks, and that of the entire board, to Ms. Croto for her service to SAU seventeen, and the school district wishes her well in the future.
Move to approve with regret.
Move to accept the resignations.
Move to accept the resignations with regret.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Well, I, it's been a, an interesting week because we had the election last week, and I just wanted to reflect that all of the warrant articles passed except for the budget, which lost by ten votes. It's really exciting that the teachers' contracts passed and the changes to the Articles of Agreement regarding the definition of an elementary school in the two communities passed by a two-thirds vote. I also wanted to, uh, to mention that, uh, we've been working really hard on the middle school, the proposed move of the middle school, and at this time, I anticipate that we should be ready to present the plan to the board and the public at the first board meeting in April. So, we're looking forward to that. That'll be a busy night because we also will have, the school board will be interviewing some candidates for assistant principal positions at the elementary schools. So, I wanted to take a moment at the organizational meeting to give you a, a little more traditional superintendent's report. So, for those of you in the back row here, if you could, uh, change around so you can see, that would be great.
Oh, it is now, okay.
Yep, I'm good, thank you. Appreciate that, Pam. So, last Thursday, we had a professional development day, last Friday, I apologize. And I talked with the, uh, staff about our direction as a district in preparation for this evening. And, uh, so I titled this slide presentation, "To Boldly Go Where." We have some questions about our direction, and I wanted to kind of explain to folks where I think we need to go. So, one of my favorite quotes of all time, although it's only seventy percent verifiable that this was actually Albert Einstein, is this quote, "Insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. It just doesn't work." Wanted to kind of frame this presentation with this brief video about the future of work. This is the world that our children will live in. And it's only a short, short video. And I love this quote from Back to the Future, "Your future hasn't been written yet, no one's has. Your future is whatever you make it, so make it a good one." That's not this Doc Brown, it's the Doc Brown from Back to the Future. I just didn't want any confusion about that. Yeah, great quote, I mean, if you want credit.
That was Jim from Taxi, right?
So, I think it's important to think about the, the fact that I, you know, every, every year I have a couple of days that my high school friends and I get together, there's fourteen of us. And we, we've, we've done it for five years. Five years ago, it was fascinating because I was sitting with, um, four or five people who are in top, top of their field in technology positions where they're creating some of the things that you saw in this video, other people that were working with the federal government around, um, developing the future of our, our ships and boats, really diverse, really intelligent group of people. And the thing that we talked about the most that whole weekend was the fact that automation would take over many, many jobs that we consider to be kind of standard jobs, like taxi drivers, folks who are driving, uh, delivery trucks. This was five years ago. And when I saw this video, it really just kind of shocked me how fast it's coming. The Amazon delivery in thirteen minutes was unbelievable, right? And so, I think that, that this all plays into the future of what we have to help our children be able to do because it used to be that by the end of your sophomore year in college, fifty percent of what you learned was no longer up to date. I'm afraid that it's by December of your freshman year now. And so, the ability to learn independently, and the ability to calculate and solve problems, I, I've always said to the board since I started working here that it's going to take four people with the intelligence of Einstein to solve the complex problems that their generation will face. And they'll have computers that will think even faster than they do. And so, the question is, how do we get our kids ready for that? So, I put a lot of thought into that, oops, sorry, didn't mean to start the video again. So, what does it mean for us? It means that we have to develop a culture in our district of personal leadership, which means that every single member of our district is doing the absolute best that they can every day to help our kids to learn what they need to know to be successful. It can't be top-down, it has to be inside-out. And that means that every single person has to have the ability to make decisions and the correct training to make those decisions accurately and effectively. We have to have a culture of learning. The teachers, myself, the administrators, we have to learn regularly to keep up with the pace of the modern world so that we can keep our kids ready for the modern world. Our, our district has an incredible culture of professional learning communities, and our, our staff work really hard to talk about instruction. Trying to help the student, I don't know why they're not there yet, do you have any suggestions? We need to have more of that for our teachers so that they can make decisions based on data instead of just looking at data, right? Data has to change instruction, or it does nothing. It's just numbers. It has to change instruction. And strategic planning, we really need to, now that we have a definition of student success, and with the passage of the change to the Articles of Agreement, we need to come up with a strategic plan for the next five years to move our district to our goals. I kind of like to troll Facebook for inspiration. That, that's not a picture of me, by the way, I just thought it was a cute picture. Pete, Pete would like... Um, so, I like this quote about leadership, and, and I sent these to staff because I thought they might like to put some in their, in their rooms, but just because you're trash doesn't mean you can't do great things. It's called garbage can, not garbage cannot. So, I thought that was a cute one. And, uh, my good friend Ross Green, who writes and travels the world talking about student behavior, says, "Kids do well if they can." And I love this quote that says, "Both optimists and pessimists contribute to society. The optimist invents the aeroplane, the pessimist the parachute." That says to me that every single kid is valuable. Every kid is valuable. I certainly, from, from a personal leadership perspective, the pessimist complains about the win, the optimist expects it to change, the leader just adjusts the sails. And that's what we'll be doing as a team, this group. We have to adjust the sails. And we've seen where the winds are coming from, and we're, we've got a, we've got a good foundation of what needs to happen, and now we need to make a clear and concrete plan as to what needs to happen and how and when. This one just reminds me of Johnny Cash, right? Even if you're on the right track, you can still get run over if you just sit there. And this is probably one of my favorite quotes of all time, "Nobody is superior, nobody is inferior, but nobody is equal either. People are simply unique, incomparable. You are you, I am I." If we don't teach our children to be themselves, to find who they are, they will never find a place in the world. Because the world is not, you get a degree and you get a ticket to a job anymore. That's failing our students. We have to figure out who they are and what they can contribute to the world, and then inspire them to go out and do it. Which frankly, for some of them, at eighteen years old, they don't know. So, we want to make sure that they have the skills for when they do know. That's, that's my goal. So, imagine if schools actually help kids identify their strengths by exploring their talents from a young age and growing their skills over the twelve years instead of letting them all follow the same routine and leaving them confused in life after graduation. That harkens back to the individuality, and there has to be a balance as we plan our strategic plan, just like the definition of student success that we developed. We have to have a balance between the core skills that we want kids to know and be able to do. They have to have core skills. You can't read if you don't know your sight words. You can't do math if you don't know your multiplication tables, addition, subtraction, division. You can't do more complex processes. Those things have to be taught to our children. But we also have to figure out how to, uh, inspire our children to find their own voice, and that's exactly what the workshop model from Teachers College does. It's designed to help children to find their own voice, starting right in kindergarten, and to learn how to express it effectively through, through writing, which, which in my opinion, in the modern age is going to... We had a period of time where writing was really important in terms of writing letters and documents, then we had a period of time where it was not as important. Writing is coming back through text messages, emails. Writing is becoming, it's another level of art form in our culture that is going to have a big impact in the future, I think. Here's a quick thought about math. Children don't hate math. What they hate is being confused, intimidated, embarrassed by math. With understanding comes passion, and with passion comes growth. A treasure is unlocked. We have a major math problem, and we'll be talking about that a lot. I, I'd even quantify that to say, or clarify that to say, our nation has a major math problem, right? The state of New Hampshire had thirty-eight percent of its students pass the SAT at the level of proficient last year, and the state of Maine had the same. So, we have to solve this problem. It's, it's, it's not only a duty to our students in this community, it's a duty to our society. So, for the strategic plan, we'll be talking about curriculum, and I already alluded to writing, the workshop model implementation. We have the Teachers College coming this summer to do training here, and we're sending more staff to Teachers College, and we'll be having Teachers College in the buildings next year and back the following summer, we hope. It's going very, very well. Dr. Haynes has done an excellent job of working on that while I've been immersed in the middle school work, and she and I have been working collaboratively as needed to make sure that it moves forward, but it's going really well. Um, we'll be implementing four units of study per year for grades K through eight, and what's that means is that out of a hundred and eighty school days, we'll have about eighty to a hundred days that are already planned out through the units of study that have been developed by Teachers College at Columbia, and then the other eighty to a hundred days will be available for the teacher to make decisions to get the kids to the level that they need to be at to do those units. And, and to have the teachers have some choice units because choice units are important for the teachers to have a voice in what the kids learn too. So, it's all about balance. Um, we will continue our professional development to increase the rigor and improve student engagement. For math, we're gonna have a math summer summit. We'll be doing a needs analysis through data review and staff feedback. We're going to evaluate our current programs and practices, and we're going to recommend changes. And I've been working with Mr. Stack, he is, uh, we looked at all the enrollments for the high school for next year, and through the course enrollments, we were able to identify one teaching position to allocate strictly to math intervention. So, we'll be having math intervention for kids who are behind grade level at the high school next year. So, we're very excited about that. That was, uh, something that we hoped we'd be able to do, but we weren't sure, and it's something that's desperately needed at the high school. So, just to be clear, he reduced, he reduced in one area and allocated that to math intervention at no additional cost. It's really exciting. Curriculum, reading, we need to increase the volume of student reading. This is already starting to happen as we've talked about at the middle level, it's very positive. We want to match students with just right books based on their Lexile scores. The Lexile score is their just right reading level from the NWEA or other assessments. And we are beginning PD for future conversations about reading instruction. I am sending a small group of teachers to Columbia this summer to study the reading program, to start thinking about implementing that in the future, but doing the writing for a year or two is a lot, so we want, we don't want to overwhelm people, we want them to focus on one thing at a time and do it really well. Grade reporting, I love this picture, by the way. We, I, I really, I've been here for eighteen months, and I've heard one thing consistently, people do not like our report cards. And, uh, I, when I was, as a parent, what I want to know is how is my child performing in regard to academic, social, and emotional benchmarks? So, what's the benchmark and how's my kid doing? And then I want to know if he's struggling in an area, is the whole class struggling in that area, or is it just my son? Because it's one thing if there's a problem with the curriculum or the instruction, and it's another thing if my son is struggling, you know, on his own or with a smaller group. And then I want to know what can I do to support my child, even if he's advanced or struggling? Every kid, neat parents want to know what to do to support them. And my point is, we need a report card that does that. And there needs to be more narrative, there needs to be more explanation. And so, Mr. Stack is working with a company called Motivus, and we'll be looking at other companies, and we're pulling together a group of people to really take a look at our report cards and what we can do to improve those. I view them as a major, important PR component for the district to the parents. It's one of the most important things we do is grade reporting. So, that's, that's a big, big one that we'll be looking at. And facilities. And facilities. Um, uh, at the time that I wrote this slideshow, the middle school move was on the cusp of getting wrapped up, which I got some great news today about figures, but I won't go into that tonight. I'll talk to you about it. I'm so excited, I wanna talk about it, but I can't, so I'm just gonna wait. And then the Articles of Agreement and the elementary plan, like what are we gonna do now that the elementary, the Articles of Agreement were passed? And what will our timeline be? And I think that we need to discuss that as part of our strategic planning process. What, what is it that we're going to do? Um, student success. So we, we have, uh, um, we have developed a definition of student success and we're, we're implementing that now. They're collecting data already for this year. And we'd like to continue the ELO and internship work. It's really important. It's going fantastic at the high school level. And continuing to grow our relationship with community colleges to maintain and increase the dual enrollment opportunities. I mean, I could've called this slide the EISA slide, but it really is the work that we've been doing in the ISA committee and and moving that work now to putting the actual benchmarks in our strategic plan, which won't be a difficult stretch because they're, the definition of student success is very well aligned. Uh, finances. We really wanna increase the amount of intervention for academic needs while maintaining a reasonable to flat budget. And that's what we've talked about, right? Is how can we look at the amount of money that we have as a district, move students forward academically without asking the taxpayers for huge increases? And I think that we, I, I really was truly um, surprised, honored, uh, a little bit, um, not shocked, but yeah, surprised. Shocked. I was a little shocked that the Articles of Agreement passed first time. Passing anything with a three-quarters vote is really, really difficult, or two-thirds. And I really believe truly that the fact that that passed is a testament to what can happen in our community when everyone works together. Everyone worked together. I wrote letters, you all campaigned, parents helped. It's what's best for our kids. And I can't tell you how grateful I am that that passed because it really lays the foundation for the future of our district. Should our enrollments continue to decline the way that NASDAQ proposed, we could theoretically be at nine-hundred-and-fifty students in just ten years. If Fremont doesn't stay and we lose four-hundred students, our district will become very, very small fast. And I wanna remind parents in the community out there who are listening to this, we lost four-hundred students in the last ten years, so that's not an impossible number of students to lose. We need to be very aware that, that being able to organize our district based on our students' needs is important, so I can't thank the people who voted for that enough. Thank you. Efficiency. So I, I, this was more for the teachers. Friendly reminder that doing your best does not mean working yourself to the point of a mental breakdown. And I just wanted to play this one last video and then it'll just be a minute or two and then I'll be done with my super-long superintendent's report tonight.
How do I know? A lot of people, when they think of the phrase, "How do I know?", they always wanna put the "what" behind it. How do I know what I'm supposed to do? The question that you really should ask is, how do I know why I'm here? Because when you know your why, your what becomes more clear and more impactful. If you know, like for instance, um, people know that I do comedy, but that's what I do. My why is to inspire people to walk in purpose. So I can do comedy, I can write books, I can be in a movie, because all of it is motivated by my why. In fact, I have a new, uh, a new web series out called Michael Junior Break Time. Uh, we probably just did the sixth episode. It's on YouTube. So every single Wednesday at three o'clock, we drop a new episode on YouTube of Michael Junior Break Time. What it is, is it's me, I travel around the country and I do stand-up comedy, in case you didn't know. And in the middle of my comedy set sometime, I'll stop and just talk to my audience. And we've been filming this and it's, you know, it's, it's pretty cool. So we're at Winston-Salem, I'm gonna show you a clip from Winston-Salem. And I'm just talking to this guy in the audience and he tells me that he's a, uh, a musical instructor at a school. So I was like, alright, you're a musical instructor, you know, can you sing? Let me hear you sing a song. So this is what happened at the last episode of Michael Junior's Break Time. Second. So you're a musical director?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, um, let me get a couple, let me get a couple bars of like, uh, Amazing Grace. Can you do the first part of that? Go ahead. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. That girl can sing. You know what I'm saying? Alright, alright. Now, once you give me the version, is if, uh, your uncle just got out of jail, you got shot in the back when you was a kid. I'm just saying, let me see the hood version real quick, if you know the word I'm talking about, just see if that exists. Let me see what you got. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a wretch like me. Oh, 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 Lord. But now, but now sun goes bright. But now, I see. Okay, um, here's what I want you to catch. The first time I asked him to sing, he knew what he was doing. The second time, he knew why he was doing it. When you know your why, your what becomes more impactful because you're walking towards or in your purpose.
Alright, thank you very much, everyone. Pam just needs the middle school update. Uh, oh, middle school update was just, I already gave that. We'll be doing that on the first and the next.
When do you see it after? If I can try that.
Realtor breakfast?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about this. So yesterday, we finally had the Realtor breakfast that we've been talking about over the last nine months. And it went really, really well. We had ten Realtors come to the district. Uh, Mr. Stack, who's in the back over there, uh, attended the meeting with me. We asked questions of Realtors, we asked them what parents wonder about, about our schools. And we talked about what we can do to help parents make a decision as to whether or not our district would be a good fit for them. And they all said the same thing, which is that, um, they really appreciated, they can't actually go into detail by law about each school when they have, um, families that they're showing around the district, but they can give them the brochure. So I wanted you to see the brochure that we came up with. And then on top of that, um, they also can tell the, the, uh, families to call the school and get a tour. Which they said has been very effective in the past when they do that. So they will certainly continue to do that and, um, it was a great breakfast. Brian, was there anything you wanted to add about that? Could you pass these around to Pete?
No, they, they appreciated the, uh, the opportunity to ask us questions and not all of them had been in the building before, so it was helpful for them to see the space, see the programs, see the kids a little bit, hear from us and, you know, for us, it's all about developing relationships with them anyway. We, we want them to know, you have questions, you give us a call, we're happy to sit down with you, talk to you about anything. That goes for anybody in the community, but they're part of the community. So it was great, you know, and I'm sure we can maybe try to have other types of meetings like that with other community groups throughout the year. I think it's, it's a good give and take and I know Tom and I certainly learned a lot too from it.
Thank you, Brian. And I think that is finally the end of my update. Thank you.
Committee reports. Wow. Policy, please.
So until the committees, the subcommittee assignments are firmed up, um, I'll just say we have our next meeting on April third in the SAU office at four forty-five PM. I'm hoping that we have a meeting, um, next week. So hopefully, the request for subcommittee assignments will be put through Thursday, maybe, Thursday or Friday.
Telling me I'm not doing my job quick enough?
I'm asking for help. I, we need to get a meeting scheduled quickly.
Fifteen minutes.
So ideally, we'll have decisions made before the end of the week.
And I'm, I'm, uh, okay. We'll talk about it in a couple of minutes.
Okay, and we have thirty policies to review, um, for D and E, section's D and E, and so we would like to meet next week. Uh, we normally meet the first Wednesdays of the month at four forty-five PM.
And Bob has thirty-seven J's ready for you as well. So, yes, a meeting would be good. I'm just gonna echo that.
I want, uh, the superintendent to meet his goals for the year, so we need to meet that way. That's all I have.
Excellence in education?
Uh, we were, we did not meet, we would've normally met tonight, but we did not. We were holding off for the organizational meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for April tenth at four thirty. Um, and I hope that I'm still, I would, I, I hope I will still be on that committee. I'll just throw that out there. I'd like to remain on that committee.
Facilities.
The facilities committee met Wednesday, March sixth. All committee members were present. Also present were Michelle Croto, Steve Riley, Kristen McNulty, Vicky Parade-Gueye, Rick Corn of Sanborn Youth Basketball Softball. And we reviewed and approved the minutes of the February sixth meeting. At the March sixth school board meeting, I reported on the portion of the facilities committee meeting earlier that day having to do with a proposal by Kingston Youth Baseball Softball to construct a dugout at the Chase Softball Field. And the school board will discuss this proposal later this evening. Also at the February sixth school board meeting, I reported on costs associated with the recommended blue light systems. And you'll recall that these are emergency visual warning systems that supplement the current audio alarms, especially in areas where alarms are not always audible. A grant that will cover eighty percent of the cost of the work at the high school and at Bakersfield School. The cost to the district at these schools is four thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. If, and this was the discussion at the February, at the, uh, the recent meeting was, um, if the layout changes are made at the high school to accommodate a middle school, additional costs may be incurred. At the facilities committee meeting on March sixth, Steve Riley reported that additional cost to real, allocate portions of the system would be determined by time and materials to do the work. And the facilities committee requested that a range of applicable hourly fees for work changes be stipulated as part of a final agreement. Ms. Croto refunded, reviewed two fund balances. The trust fund reserve fund is two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, fifty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. And the facilities revolving fund accounting is in the process of being finalized. On March thirtieth, the balance was one-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, the balance will be updated as soon as it is finalized and I have an updated balance for you in the financial committee report. Vicky Parade-Gueye and Steve Corn of Sanborn Youth Basketball provided follow-up information on the youth basketball proposal to install a vending machine at the Swayze Gym. The purpose is to provide soft drinks and raise money for scholarships to offset some costs of participation by qualified students. The committee agreed to a one-year trial for the vending machines. The youth group will cover installation and maintenance costs. Steve Riley reported on a boiler water leak at Bakersfield School. Mr. Riley stated the cause is unknown and the boiler is no longer leaking. Not addressing this does not make it worse. No action was recommended. The leak cannot be diagnosed unless it returns and the boiler would have to be taken apart to determine the cause. In the event, the boiler needs to be shut down. The school is equipped with a second boiler, so there would be no impact on heating. The next facilities meeting is scheduled for April third at three forty-five PM.
How about finance?
Yep.
The finance committee met on March eighteenth. The committee members present were Tammy Mahoney and Jim Baker, plus business administrator Michelle Croto, along with assistant Kristen McNulty. Minutes from our February twentieth meeting were reviewed and approved. We reviewed last year's seminary property warrant article, number eight, which authorized the district and town of Kingston to enter into negotiations concerning terms of a possible sale. No sale is pending and other options may be considered. Any sale would require a separate warrant article. The business administrator updated the committee on various fund balances. As of February twenty-eighth, the special education trust fund balance is two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and ten cents. The capital improvement reserve fund is one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. And the facilities youth revolving fund balance is one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and fourteen cents. Sixteen cents, I'm sorry. We discussed the renewal of the food service program. We do anticipate an increase in the cost of the school lunches. The business administrator is waiting for some information from the state that is needed to finalize the proposed increase. The proposed increase will be presented to the school board for discussion as soon as it is available. We discussed a renewal proposal by the district's property and liability insurer and we're waiting for additional information before making a recommendation to the school board. We reviewed and approved budget adjustments totaling sixteen thousand, five-hundred-seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents. We also reviewed the MS-22 form that must be reported to the state. This form details a breakdown of expenditures by function that make up the appropriations voted by the public on March twelfth. This form is being completed to reflect the appropriations voted under the default budget. Upon completion of the MS-22, it will be forwarded to the school board for final approval. Lastly, we reviewed an evaluation by school district administrators for bids on school photography services. Three companies were reviewed. All three have been used in the past. Hockmeyer Studios received the reviewer's highest overall marks. Therefore, we recommend Hockmeyer and would support a motion by the school board to award the photography services bid to Hockmeyer Studios for the current year. I'd ask for that motion to be made this evening.
Still moved?
What, you wanna?
Second discussion.
What's the motion? Just so Phil can write it down.
To approve Hockmeyer Studios as the, uh, photography services for the school, the school district this year.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you hold, hold one second, Ollie, please? Okay, who made the motion?
I made the motion. The second was Jim.
Alright, okay, here we go, discussion, yep.
The only low rating we had was the quality of the package. We had top ratings and everything. And I'll start by apologizing for not being able to attend. I still had library trustee duties that conflicted with that time, so had to finish off there before I could give you a hundred and ten percent. But I still looked over the agenda and Hockmeyer had high ratings in every area. My question, does there, does that warrant granting a more favorable price for a lower-quality package compared to the other three vendors?
Where are you seeing lower quality?
The numbers, the ratio, the, did I miss it? I could've missed it.
One person gave them lower ratings, one out of four.
You know what I think it was? I think I read the sixty is fifty.
Okay.
I stand corrected. Never mind.
Okay.
Thanks for checking the phone, making me check, Jim.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Is that it for finance?
Uh, the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for April seventeenth at four thirty PM.
Public relations.
Uh, public relations has not met since our last meeting. Um, there's a meeting on the, on the schedule, on the calendar for next Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, but I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure if the committee assignment is done by then, so, and then the following meeting, I think, is during, on the schedule for April vacation. So I guess the public relations committee meeting- So I guess the public relations committee meeting schedule is undefined at the moment.
We'll work on it. We'll figure it out.
Personnel?
Uh, we're, we're...
Okay, no, that's fine. I, I understand that, you know? That's why I'm probably gonna do this tonight, even though I'm not a hundred percent about it, so. SST, anything on the SST?
Oh, no, I met with the SST. They, they're almost done with hiring a new principal. So as soon as I know, you'll know.
Anything on seminary?
Not today.
Okay, and, no budget?
No budget.
Okay.
All done.
Well, I hope I don't regret doing this. I have penciled in and I've got it pretty much, and, you know, when you make decisions, I ran into a saying...
You never get thanks.
Pardon?
You never get thanks.
You never get thanks, she said.
Well...
That depends what they are.
I like, yeah. I like this, 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 this lady said something the other day. She said, "Everybody knows what to do with the bull, except for the guys who got the bull by the horns." So, I was saying the tiger by the tail, but anyway. I'll tell you how I looked at it, and I will tell you, I know the policy says the chairman appoints them and everything, but as you, most of you know, I take a lot of input from you and I listen to you and I try to adjust. Pam, how many policies do we have this year we're looking at?
Uh, for the next meeting, we have...
No, not the next meeting, for the next year. Hundred and fifty was, you think?
At least.
Yeah, so we've got a hundred and fifty policies. We have a middle school issue. We have a seminary issue. We've got some hiring issues. We've got some issues that we don't know about yet. We got issues coming all over the place. So I made a couple of decisions. One, two-person per committee. We can always add one if a committee comes to me and says, "We need a third person." You can always add, but it's hard to take it away, because the amount of work we're gonna get, and to be out an extra night or an extra time, it's gonna take its toll by the time you get through the year. So I think we'll go two people. Well, that's one decision I made, two people, but if you come to me and say, "You know, public relations really needs three," then we'll work that out then. But let's try it for a couple of months, see how it works. We have a very experienced board right now, all right? And we've all been on, I think, pretty much the committees that I'm gonna start assigning. So I think things are gonna run smoothly. So with all this coming at me, I thought, "What's the best way to do it?" And this is what I came up with. I've got the bull by the horns, and you people are gonna say, "Hey, Pete, you oughta do this," you know, but that's okay. So on policy, Pam, that's gonna be you. And Larry. Right? Larry, you were on policy before. Pam was on policy before. Great experience, we're in good shape. My opinion. Excellence in education. Ellie, you were at it, well, you know...
I've been doing that for years.
I believe you were on it this year?
Yes.
So we've got good experience. Facilities. You were on facilities last time? No? Okay, that's the change then. You were, and I'm putting you with it.
Who are you pointing at? Can you just...
That would be, that would be Jim and Larry. Finance. You were on it before. Ellie, you weren't, but, right?
Yeah, she's...
Oh, you were on it, okay, so that, that's why I chose that. I don't have the sheet in front of me, sorry.
Can we just do names, 'cause I can't see who you're pointing to?
Pardon?
Writing this down, so can you...
You didn't tell who it is instead of pointing at us.
Yeah, just say their names.
Okay, okay, okay.
Who's finance?
Public relations.
Finance.
Finance?
Finance, that's Jim and Ellie. Public relations? Tammy? Ellie? That's one you could be really buried this year. Between the middle school, if, depending on where we go there, we got a budget's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars less, hey? And a facility situation, which Tom has been talking about, you've had those gentlemen in. So you could really be doing a yeoman's job this year.
We can handle it.
Jamie. Okay, I'm sorry, personnel. Jamie Fitzpatrick and Pam. Were you on personnel before? No, okay, so that's, that's, that's the one that I was having problems with. Jamie, SST. I'm giving you one school board member position, one school board position, and the SST, I'll tell you why I'm only giving you one school board position. SST is in Exeter. Gonna take you a half hour to get there to begin with, and a half hour back, and meets once a month. And I think it'd be good for you, I, I would suggest, that if you have time, to sit in on some of these other meetings, if you have the time, and see how they operate. But I didn't wanna throw you in the deep end of the pool just yet, all right? You will have your time, and trust me. Larry knows, he's, he's laughing. So I thought, because SST is Exeter and it's a half hour, Tom goes to all of them, you know, so he'll be the other person. But, I mean, what time do they usually get out?
Uh, it starts at four thirty on Monday nights and ends at six.
Okay, so that's not too, too bad.
Five thirty to six.
So I, I kinda made a decision for you, but that's kinda what the job is that I have, so, you know, okay.
What do we do if people aren't happy with their assignments?
Talk to me, but don't expect a change, all right? I mean, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I've gone over this, I've got hours of work in here. I, I, like last year, if you remember, I agonized over this, all right? I'm trying to give experience and knowledge, and, and trying not to bury people. I'm telling you, we are gonna be very, very busy this year, just with the, just the middle school and the seminary. I mean, like I say, we can add a person to any committee. If you really feel that, you know, we really need a person, then, you know, Jamie's a good example. He's only got one committee per, one, you know? If we say, "Hey, we really need it," hey, I'm open to that, you know?
I would like to add Jamie to either facilities or finance, because those are gonna be big jobs, and he's got thirty-five years' worth of experience.
See, that's another thing, I have no experience with Jamie. Jamie, you could be the CEO of a corporate investment bank, I don't know. You might be perfect for finance. I, I, you're an unknown to me, so that came into it too. I, what I would like to do, though, is, let's give it a, a meeting or two, you know, because I think that'd be a good way to, good way to attack it.
I'm, I'm gonna challenge that decision for a second, because I think I agree with Jim. Jamie's new...
Yeah, I'm glad I'm with Jim. No, go ahead.
Well, it makes sense. If you have a person, a new board member who's got a financial background, what better way than to have him get a feel for the district and some finance committee? You didn't assign him to the budget committee, which is even more intense, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
It goes against my dictatorial tendencies. Jamie, which one would you prefer?
You know what, Mr. Chairman, you can do as you choose, but I, I'm concurring with my colleague to my rights, and I think it would make sense.
I have no problem with that, you know?
I have another question.
Well, wait, 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 let's get, let's get this one squared away.
I, I did wanna mention that, that one thing that I wondered about is, the, the facilities committee and the finance committee are so deeply intertwined in terms of the topics, because if it's facilities-related, it has money involved. Would it make sense for, for the three members, if Jamie wants to be involved with this work? 'Cause, I mean, you asked if he could join, but he didn't, I'm not...
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't discussed it with him yet, so...
I don't wanna speak for Jamie.
Yeah.
But I, but I'm simply saying that I hear what Jim's saying, and, and I, I wondered if there should be one meeting time of an hour and a half where facilities is the first forty-five minutes and finance is the second forty-five minutes, and it's the same three people, and it's really efficient, because they're almost always linked. Yeah, I'm just trying to make things more, and we, I, I know that Pete's saying that you have a lot of work coming up this year. I, I gotta tell you, we have a lot of work coming up this year. So if we can figure out a way to be more efficient and have a facilities slash finance committee, that might really help, Jim. And I'm throwing that out for your consideration.
Why don't we hold off on that until we have some concrete information?
Well, let me respond to that. I think theoretically, that makes a lot of sense, but I do, I get, I do a lot of work to prepare for each of these committees. And forty-five minutes for the meetings is not enough sometimes.
That was just an example. Yeah, you might do two hours.
The other thing is, to do them back-to-back, I don't think, I think it's gonna be too much to do in the same day, back-to-back.
Okay, all right.
But I appreciate the suggestion.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure your proficiency's purposes.
Oh, you can't talk, this is about you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very good at talking about me.
Would you have a preference between facilities and finance?
So, one of the questions is what my background is. So I have a, I have a BS in finance. I have been certified as a certified management accountant. I have been running businesses for the better part of fifteen years. I have been in many, many different functions throughout my time, including facilities manager, plant manager, rather. I have managed a business of up to three hundred million dollars. So I have significant experience in finance. So I, I'd have no issues whatsoever in, in supporting either or both. That's fine.
Okay, so this being government, obviously you qualified the policy. That's a joke, folks. All right.
All right, Peter, let's, let's move on.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Fi, finance is fine, if that's the one.
It's fine?
Yeah.
I do have a question on, on personnel. So I'm not sure what personnel does. I've been coming to the meetings for quite some time, and there hasn't really been a report out on personnel in months. So I'm not sure what personnel subcommittee does.
I, I think that there's a technical definition for the personnel committee in the, in the manual, right? There's a policy that defines the subcommittees. Typically, what would happen is if there's a personnel need, change, or suggestion that I might be making to the board, I would bring that to the personnel committee for consideration, feedback and input, and then we would discuss it and bring it to the board. So the purpose of all of our subcommittees is to do what, what I would call the, the preliminary work to present to the board whatever the issue is. So for example, Pam and I work together to prepare all of these policies. There's a lot of work that goes on for the policies prior to their presentation to the community. They go, I read them, they go through the admin team, the admin team gives input, the policy committee gives input, and then it's presented to the school board for a final consideration. So the personnel committee might be, if I felt like I needed to reorganize a department or make major changes, I'd wanna run those things by them. We haven't had a lot of that happen since I've been here. When I first got here, we did a lot of work in personnel on the evaluation of the superintendent. The, the policies regarding administrative hiring were reviewed a lot by the personnel committee early on, but there just hasn't been a lot of work for that committee recently. So certainly in terms of, if you were to ask me to rank the importance or necessity of our committees, you know, like Dave Letterman's top ten, that would be one of the smaller groups. So if you wanted to take on finance and facilities both, I don't think there'd be a problem with that. I think that, that certainly based on what you just shared regarding your extensive experience, we'd love some help. Right? It's just gonna be a, a learning curve this year for you. So there's a lot. And the SST is having, there's a lot going on at the SST, and I'll catch you up about that later. Yeah, that's a really cool, it's amazing. You're gonna love that.
I don't think I would jump into three pools just yet. I think, which would, if you also choose facilities, or if you'd like to be on facilities, no problem coming to me, I mean, we, we, we pretty much try to get along here, so we're in pretty good shape. So that'll, hold on one second, that'll put you on finance also. Is that all right? Okay?
Well, you don't have me on facilities, so you gotta change...
I have facilities. Uh, I have Larry and Jim.
Okay, so finance and facilities are not the same people, then?
No.
Finance, facilities are not the same people.
Okay, I just wanted clarification, because you said the same three people on both.
Okay, facilities is Larry and Jim, finances, Jim, you, and Jamie.
Right.
Okay, can we, okay, what you got?
Jamie's a freshman member.
Yep.
You've heard what his experience is. I think SST would be better served by someone who's not new to the committee.
You want it?
I don't want it, but I know somebody.
Well, then I'd suggest you let Jamie into his job.
But I know somebody who does.
Really?
The vice chairman.
Well, except that I, she doesn't know it yet, but I've got her on another committee.
All right, guys.
What I'm trying to do is, what I was trying to do is not overload his plate just coming in.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, so let's, let's... Well, he, he is now on three committees. He's SST.
I think we need to start this conversation.
I agree, especially considering that, you know, really, it's my job, my call. So let's, let's go further here. All right, seminary, I, I gave, that's, that's Ellie and Pam. Right? Budget, Larry. Negotiations, same as last year, Larry and Jim. And wellness. If I remember correctly, when we brought out wellness, Pam, you seemed to have a keen interest in it.
Oh, no, I did not.
Wait a minute, no. No, seriously, I'm, I'm being serious here.
I'm not even looking this way, I'm staying out of this.
This was the policy that we had to put in.
I, I'm serious, I thought you did.
Pam, I think we can do that once a year, though, and meet with Lickies to...
It's once every six months, is it?
I avoided having another committee, was what I suggested.
I have to concur with Pam that she did suggest that we avoid having another committee, and we actually got a legal read on it.
But this is...
It'll only meet once every six months.
Yeah, it meets once every six months, and it's now mandated, am I correct?
Yes, it's, we, I think Pete really is joking, Pam. It really is only gonna meet once every six months.
No, I, I, no, no, I'm serious. If I had thought someone, I, I honest to God thought you had spoken in, in, in favor of that.
No, that's fine, but my, my concern is that, just generally, that last year, we were allowed to provide input into our preferences.
Yep.
And I never would've put personnel at the top of my preference ordering. I would prefer to be on the EISA committee, since I'd done so much work on that committee.
Well, okay.
I don't wanna get into the argument of the assignments.
Again, again, I've got the bull by the horns, you know?
But apparently you had the list ready, even though we hadn't selected you as the chair yet.
No, I believe, I believe, the first thing I said was, "I really wasn't ready to do this."
Right.
All right, I could've done this very coldly and just sent an email out and said, "That's my decision," because ultimately, it is my decision. You guys made me the guy that I am, so...
All right, the guy that you are is running wicked late.
Yes, but we're saving much time later down the road.
Doubt it.
Okay, when it comes to the wellness, we'll talk about it, because I believe it meets, it meets twice a year, and that's it.
Is it during the day, or after, at the end of the day?
It's a brand-new committee, nobody knows.
Well, no, Vicky has a committee already.
You and I, neither one of us wanted that committee, so you take one, I'll take one. How's that for a deal?
Whatever, whatever the chair decides, I will accept as a decision.
Okay, on the wellness committee...
I'm just saying that I was a little stunned that we reduced the number of committee members, and without discussion, in fact, the policies state for some of these subcommittees, there should be three people, if I recall.
High act, no, it doesn't, because I checked into that before I did this.
I don't know, okay.
At the beginning, I said, "Let's see how it works." I don't think you, well, maybe you are, because maybe you've got the time, but I don't think some of us grasp the magnitude of the work we're gonna be running into. Okay, now, I'm gonna appoint Ellie and Pam to the wellness committee. You two can decide who goes first to which meeting. Sound like a plan?
Sounds fine, Mr. Chairman.
See that? We work everything out if we can. Phyllis, you got that all right, too, for those two?
Just checking that Mr. Patrick did not take facilities, it's just finance. And SST, as well as personnel.
Yeah, Jamie's got finance, SST, and...
You won't know yet, none of us know.
Right, and, and I'll tell you, if you can't make, he goes all the time anyway, so this isn't something like, oh, jeez, it's Monday and I need to go. And my, my, my unofficial vice chair, who unfortunately isn't sitting next to me, can't go like that, is telling me to move on.
I could bring my gavel and bring it over you.
I gave it to you once before, you didn't keep it.
I'll bring my own next time. I'll bring my own next time.
Okay. How you doing, Adam?
Doing great.
What do we got?
So, the freshmen are currently brainstorming fundraiser ideas and playing their eighth-grade step-up dance. The sophomores are having a Pizza Fest competition fundraiser soon. That sounds fun. They're also signing their community calendars. The juniors are prepping for prom, they just finished their Yankee Candle fundraiser. The seniors are fundraising for the senior trip and graduation. The student council as a whole just gave out thank-you notes the other day to all the teachers who helped out with Winnetka Bowl.
You wanna tell us about the Pizza Fest fundraiser?
I don't know much about this, actually, like, it's kinda like in the early stages. But from what I gather, it's like, I can't remember if they said, like, you'd be making your own pizza, or like, I think.
Come see me if it's pizza, 'cause I'm in.
I will.
All right.
I think you should make the School Board do it.
Yeah, you should invite us all for a team-building pizza-making session.
I'll see if you guys can be judges.
Ooh, cool. That'd be fun.
See what pizza's the best.
Oh, that means we have to eat it.
Yeah.
Put me down.
All right.
Okay. Okay, public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, three minutes, if you would, please, and on something that has already been, uh, I'm gonna, it has to be on the agenda, I'm sorry, but do we have anyone who wants to step forward? Do we have anyone who wants to step forward? Do we have anyone?
Mrs. Gannon.
Mrs. Gannon always wants to step forward.
Thank you, Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. Congratulations to our new Board Member and, anybody get re-elected? Who else?
Yeah, Ellie and Pete.
Oh, Mr. Broderick. I don't know about that chairmanship, you guys might wanna reconsider that. I wanted to make a comment on a comment that the Superintendent made, in that every kid's parents want to support their kids. I think there are a lot of parents that cannot support their kids, for whatever reasons. And we know by research that the biggest key to success for kids in school is support of their family and their parents. So, I hope that the new PR Committee would consider something that Mr. Stack said about developing relationships and how important that really is. If we can get parents off of their computers and into the schools for events like we had tonight, how many parents were here tonight, 'cause their kids were here? If we can get more events like that, we can get support, we can get people knowledgeable about the things that the school needs support on. And I also would like to, in regards to policy, read a little bit from Policy BA. Purpose of this policy is to assure Sanborn Regional School Board defines operational goals on an annual basis and conducts an annual self-evaluation. In May, in May of each year, and I'm saying this because every year I stand here, and this Board has rarely come up with, in that timeframe, operational goals, and I think this is important, it's kind of like the strategic plan. You are mapping out where you're going to go and you're evaluating yourself, very, very important. How do you know if you're getting where you're going if you're not evaluating yourself? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Annie Collier Newton. I just want to say, on all the subcommittees that have just been established, that I often get to go to some of the Subcommittee meetings and I would think any School Board Member could go to anyone that they're interested in, too. They're a fascinating source of information and the brief reports that are given here don't get all the stuff there, so I think that the Subcommittee work is fantastic that you guys do, and I for one very much appreciate it and appreciate the amount of work that you all put in. Thank you.
Last call. Moving on. Pam, I did not set this up. Honest to God, I did not set this up. Policy, Wellness Policy.
So, the three policies we have tonight are Second Reads. There have been no changes to these, the Policy Subcommittee has not recommended any further changes, except there's one typo for the Wellness Policy document. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve a Second Read.
So, move, I move for the Second Read.
Second.
On all three policies?
Yes.
On all three?
Yes.
JLCF, JM, and the new developmental delay.
The new ones, IHBAB. Any discussion or additional comments?
Did anybody second?
Second.
Actually, I thought, okay. I definitely did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Being a half hour ahead.
As you should be.
I couldn't resist that.
As you should be.
I gotta tell you, I had dinner before I came over and I had cereal with about that much sugar on it, so bear with me.
I'll have to talk to you about what you should be.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't talk to him, I'd talk to Maria.
Hey, Ellie.
Yes.
But, but, but just, but just in case. Okay. Public, public comment on School Board meetings. Actually, I don't believe it's public comment, I believe, well, School Board comment, I believe.
So, I have a motion, I move that we, not to overburden the Policy Committee, but I move that we ask the Policy Committee to review Policy BEDH and possibly Policy BEDB, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
Okay, is there anything specific?
That's a motion that I just made. I move.
Somebody needs a second if we're gonna discuss it.
Second comes first, then discussion.
I second the motion.
Okay, Jamie just seconded it.
All right. Discussion. Anything specific you're looking for?
So.
Because you may not be at the meeting, so.
I think I will be at the meeting.
Okay.
At the last, well, at our last meeting in particular, there were some liberties I felt taken with the amount of time taken on public comment and some of the topics. I felt, it seemed to me, far, fairly far from our policy, which is that public comment is to be made to the School Board regarding agenda items. And so, I would like, the Policy Committee is better equipped to have a more lengthy discussion on whether that is a concern, whether there are other, there are additions that we could make to the policy to kind of shore up and kind of tighten our policy regarding agenda, you know, sticking to the agenda.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just agree with you, Pam, Tammy, excuse me. A number of the speakers talked about the fact that, the warrant articles was what they really were addressing. They were showing support for the most prospective children, for their teachers. And I think that was well within their purview, under our policy as it stands, to speak highly of the teachers that they work with. You had the floor, could I finish?
I just wanna make sure he recognizes me after you've done so.
I did recognize her.
No, Ellie speaking, I just wanna be next.
Oh, you want, okay, it's fine.
She wants to talk. It's okay, and we can go back and forth, it's okay.
That's all right, no, no, because everybody gets a chance and then we'll go, everybody gets a chance, then we'll go, you'll have another chance. I don't know who else wants to.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to jump in the middle of what you're saying, I just wanna follow the protocol.
Go ahead, that's all right.
And have, what I wanna say is, I think that the people did speak to what was on ergen and that was particularly the Articles of Agreement, which included, and I know they slipped in a couple of things about Cory, I wasn't, I wasn't happy about that, but it wasn't like, these are kids talking, they were trying to be supportive of coming out to vote in support of our warrant, and I think that was commendable. I, I think, and I think Pete did a good job when, I love Cory, but he strayed when he said, "I wanna be re-elected," because, out of line, and Pete shut him down. So, I think that was appropriate, and I told that to Cory as well. Very emotional, but you, as Chairman, and I've served in that seat many times over the 13 years I was on this Board before, when you have parents and students speaking to us, we have to accord them the respect. In my opinion, three minutes is the guideline. You don't want people to go on for now, it's not, it's, we have the business to conduct and I understand that. And you have two sections on the agenda for public comment, that's good, and I would have a third one, School Board Comment, God knows, we should have a few words once in a while. I think it was handled very well. I appreciate the discomfort for some of, where we went offline with Cory in particular, I get that, but I don't know that we have to throw the baby with the bad water out and review policies that I think are fairly specific as it is. You can't, when you have the public come and talk, they need, it's their schools, their School Board, their money, their teachers, their day in court, so to speak. That's my opinion.
There's one thing I think we need to remember, the public is our boss, and they do that by the vote. And I think, as you said before, this is nothing more than a guideline, the three minutes to talk. That's a guideline. And as Ellie said, sitting in a Chairman's spot, it's, a lot of it is by the seat of your pants. And I really don't think we really wanna change too much what we're doing right now, 'cause you could be walking down a real tight path that you might not like some other time.
Let me just kind of follow.
Can I just clarify?
No, no, because, wait, 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 Tammy, Tammy.
Can I just clarify?
Not yet.
Oh.
Okay, the policy or the process is, you spoke, now each person gets a chance to speak and then we go back to you, but you don't get a chance to speak once you've spoken until others have spoken their point, because you might wanna say something, if I don't speak and then I say something, you might wanna say something about what I spoke, you see? So, what you wanna do is you wanna hear it so you can include everything, and that's why they set the process up, that everybody gets their chance to speak and then if a person wants to speak again, they can. You see, you see, you see the logic to that?
I don't know where that is in our policy manual, but.
No, 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 that's not in the policy manual, but it is in when you go to school to learn to be a Chairman of the School Board, that is what they teach you, that everyone gets to speak and then you go back to the other person, so not one person controls the meeting, right? And it's up to the Chairman to make sure the meeting runs smoothly. So, you spoke, Ellie spoke, Larry spoke, I just said I would like to speak, you just raised your hand, I will acknowledge him and then we'll move forward. Now, a lot of times, people don't realize it, I see people raising their hand, like you just raised yours, Jamie, I don't think anybody else saw it, right? Which is one of the fun things I have to do, you know, is kinda look around. So, you will certainly be allowed to speak again, but we've got to run the process the way the process makes everything run smoothly. And what I'm gonna say is a couple of things. One, be careful in restricting the Chairman, it happens to be now, because down the road it can come back to bite you. But, to give you how I work, this happens to be the agenda from last time. If you notice, I have times, tonight, two people spoke, one at 7:12, one at 7:14. So, I'm watching the three minutes. But as I said to one person, like being in church, you're listening to the sermon and you think that's the perfect place for the priest or the rabbi or the minister to stop, and he goes on again. And that's how it is when people are speaking. You think, oh, okay, good two and a half minutes, fine, and then, because you don't know what they're going to say. My feeling was, everyone who spoke, granted, they were cutting the edge, I will agree with you that, and when I went home and I watched it, I went, oh, I probably should have. But again, I'm the one with the bull by the horns, and I sat there, but when Cory did go over, that's when I gavelled him. But be careful in restricting, because I run the meeting, the Chairman, right? You get to, you get to put it in, so I have to make the call, all right? And I do the best I can. I'm looking at the clock, I'm looking at my time, I'm looking at the people who wanna talk, and I'm also trying to hear what they're saying, so it's like throwing balls up in the air and juggling and try to keep them all up there and all on your hands at the same time. So, having said that, just be careful how restrictive you make a Chairman's job, that's all I'm saying. So, Jamie, you are next.
Yeah, so I seconded the motion, the reason I seconded the motion is what I heard was we should have Policy review that. I was here at the meeting and I was the one running, in opposition, as it were, and it did seem to me that it was straddling the line, if not over it. And I think that the motion was simply that the Policy Committee would be best suited to review the policy, to take a look at that and to make their recommendation. If my understanding is correct in the Board, any such recommendation would come to the entire Board for a vote. So, that's why I seconded the motion.
You're right. You are correct, you are correct.
Yep.
So, I'm inclined to allow more free speech than less, and during campaign season, peoples get their juices flowing and they can pretty much tie any agenda item to a speech about a specific Board Member's performance or past performance or their expectations surrounding the campaign and the election process. So, it's difficult to decide when to limit anyone's speech and I'd rather not do that during public comment, but we do have a policy, a Code of Ethics BCA, on nine pages, and on page four, under Personal Advertisements, it states, "Employees," which includes Board Members, "shall not use school district work hours, property or services," presumably including Board Meeting Videos, Services, "to perform or promote personal enterprises or to campaign for any candidate for political office," which I would assume includes oneself and even if one's, whether one's an incumbent or running for office, we're there just to do our jobs. So, I think the problem was when we got into, "I'm running," or "I'm running to reelection," that was when.
Right.
We had the issue, because we have forums, candidate nights already scheduled during the election season, the towns each have their own, the students sometimes organize something like that. And I think that, at that point, we should've had some intervention by the Chair, but otherwise, I find election speeches highly entertaining and sometimes informative, and I enjoy them very much. But if you would like us to revisit the policy, I have no objection.
Jim?
I don't see any problem revisiting it, we've all had a discussion here, it's not like a change is being made or proposed. Look at it, see if it needs to be tightened up, if it doesn't, it doesn't, review the policy that Pam just read, and maybe recommendation, make a recommendation to the Board and the Chairman. If something needs to be done a little better. I don't have a problem with that.
Tammy?
Okay, so I, there was some, definitely some interpretation here that was taken, I just wanna clarify, I'm not speaking of every public comment that was made, and I'm especially not speaking of the students, I would certainly afford them some leeway, they, they were, in my opinion, appropriate, they're, they did not get into supporting particular candidates and naming specific candidates that they supported, which other, some other members of the public did. So, I'm definitely, like, not, I'm not speaking of the students and I agree with Pam, I don't, I, it's very tricky, I don't want to, you know, limit free speech, it's very tricky when you write a policy that you don't want to limit First Amendment, right, to speak. That's why I wanted to send this to the Policy Committee, because they are better equipped to have this discussion and get legal opinions than, than we are right now.
And the way else has spoken, and I'd like another, I wanna build on.
Oh, I just thought you were waving to me, yeah, go ahead.
I wanna build on what Tammy said.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think Cory was out of line, and I agree with you in that. I felt bad for him, I understand that he was nervous in elections and all that stuff, my new colleague not was standing over here to my left, and he was out of line. But the issue may be bigger than that, and maybe the issue is, I don't know why it disappeared, but I used to like School Board Comment, and maybe that would be something to consider putting back on for us to have, again, limited timeframe, now, I'm not talking about campaigning, I think that's inappropriate, and maybe when we get closer to next year, in the fall, we could talk about, you know, whether we should, the Budget Committee upset me because they had a slide with all the candidates on it, I didn't like that, I didn't think it was appropriate for, and I, I said my piece and that was fine, but maybe those types of things are more an issue than one Board Member who kinda went over the edge a little bit, you know what I'm saying? The bigger issue is, can we perform our duty, stay out of the political piece of it when there's election time, 'cause it's, it's a mess anyways. And maybe we, maybe what we really need is some opportunities for us as Board Members to have a few minutes to chat at the Board Meeting. I had a fabulous experience yesterday, I would, would like to commend some of the staff members, there's no chance for me to do so. There may be other circumstances where my colleagues go to events and activities in the school and they'd like to commend the students or the staff for whatever reason, we don't have a venue to do that. That I'd like to see with you.
I might be able to help you with that.
Okay.
I'd like to move the motion.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify something. No, I just wanna clarify something. Under the policy, School Board Members can call the Chair and ask things to be put on the policy, put on, put on the agenda, and that's exactly what Tammy did, she called me, she said. She called me, she said she'd like it, I said, sure. When we first took the school board comments off, we did that, and there was quite a discussion about, any school board member can bring up issues at a school board meeting. So they took
Where?
Here, it, it, here. Now, you, I, I, that was, we had quite a discussion on it, Ellie, and I agree with you, there should probably be school board comment, period, you know, the point. However, I think this case would have been better, is correct to put on the agenda, even though she has a comment, so that we're not blindsided by, let's call this a major issue, where versus a comment of congratulating the staff or something. We can put that back on, Ellie, Ellie, I'm sorry, Phyllis, why don't you throw that on the agenda for the, for the next one, and we'll actually have a good discussion about that. Because we did go round and round about two years ago on that. Okay? Now, I think anything we talk about from now, we're going to talk about when we talk about the policy. So I agree with you, let's move the motion. Okay? So, all in favor of having the policy committee visit? Can I call it that?
Yeah.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, you want all four of them. So I'll, I'll read them, right, am I correct? Oh, no, I'm sorry, two of them. And that is, Phyllis, BEDH and BEDB, okay? And they'll visit them and report back to us. Okay? All in favor? Okay? opposed? Okay. If everything was a hundred percent, they wouldn't need us.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Pam, okay?
Yeah, yeah, what you got?
Pam, what was the, what was the policy that you cited earlier, and which part? I couldn't catch it. BCA, was that the one?
BCA.
Okay, and what part?
It was under personal advertisements, page four.
Okay. And, because I'm the one who has to kind of interface with Will Phillips, I just wanted to know, before we have the policy committee meeting, is the intent of the board to have the policy committee, under BEDH, number one, the policy clearly says, speakers will be allotted three minutes per person, it's firm. It's not flexible. At three minutes, Pete gavels them, that's what it says. And then, number two says, members of the public may offer comments on agenda items only. And I just wanted to share with the board, without getting in the middle of this, this conversation, that I struggled when some parents said, "I'm talking about warrant article number one, election of school board, election of officials." And they spoke about certain people on the board. It happened quickly, and then they stopped and kept going with more appropriate language. And so what I'm wondering is, what I don't want to do is spend a, a, a half an hour in a subcommittee meeting, trying to figure out what to do with this, I really think that this should just be an agenda item, we should ask Will Phillips his opinion, bring that opinion to the board, and just talk about it.
I'm going to disagree with you.
Okay, all right.
I don't want a lawyer in on this, yet. I think we should discuss it, and if we want to leave it alone, we leave it alone. If we want to propose some changes, then we review it with counsel. I don't want to keep running to a lawyer every time we sneeze.
Well, Will, Will, just so you know, Will's free, and he does our policy reviews, it's, yeah.
He's in, he's in.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I don't want to go running to someone, I want, if we as a board have an issue, then we need to discuss it as an issue. If we can reach a compromise, it'd be a beautiful thing.
And, and I would, I just want to say that I'm fine with that, I was just simply proposing that, I, I think that my question is, reading this policy, if I'm going to be at the policy meeting and working on this, I need to know, not from the committee, but from you all, as a board, probably as a vote, are you asking Pete to gavel people at three minutes? And are you asking Pete to gavel people the moment somebody, because there was a moment when one parent went into an item, and I actually looked at Pete, and Pete looked at me, and he just kind of gave me the hang tight for a second motion, and it went away, and the person kept going appropriately. It was tough, but then when it came time, when it got inappropriate, there was no hesitation to stop it. So I just, I, I'm just asking you to help me to understand what I'm researching in my homework. That's what I'm asking you.
Well, you guys are going to talk about that.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, and let's not, and I mean it sincerely when I say, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. This was a contentious campaign. In all my years, I've never seen anything like it. We had members individually speaking, supporting, actively, wonderful activity in the political process, but it was a contentious campaign. So let's not change everything that we do because of one election.
Good point. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on. Kingston Youth Baseball Donation, policy KCD, public gifts and donations.
Do you know, is that you that brought that up? Sure. Okay, so, the Kingston Youth Baseball Softball, Rick Corn and Coach Vicki came to the Facilities Committee with a proposal to build a dugout at the softball field. There's one currently at the baseball field, they want one of the softball field.
Wait a minute, I'm confused, now, you said the softball.
Yeah.
You're talking on Chase Field.
Chase.
Okay.
Yeah. And they're willing to raise the money to pay for it, which they estimate is going to be about $3,500. So we have two poli, basically what it boils down to is, the school board needs to accept the donation of the value of the, of the facility when it, when it's completed. And there's two policies that govern that, KCD and KCDR, and we followed the policies, we post, we, we spoke about it at the last meeting, we posted it in this agenda. There's some conditions about it, that the KYBS, that's the, the algorithm for Kingston Youth Baseball Softball, has agreed to confirm that Lovering Construction will oversee the project and assure it's properly constructed. They'll also be asked to provide a certificate of insurance, and the KYBS will security needed permits. Steve Riley will also monitor the project to be sure that district interests are looked after. So what I'd like to propose is a motion to accept the donation of the
The dugout.
The dugout, yep. With the conditions that I just read.
And they'll pull all appropriate permits from the town.
Right.
Second?
That's my job.
I know, I know.
I have a motion, I have a second, you get that, all right? Okay, discussion.
I don't want to put a damper on you on this.
Yes.
But somewhere in the back of my mind, I remember, in order for a board to accept public gifts or donations, it has to be granted to you by a warrant article that is issued.
That's over $5,000.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
We had a similar situation a couple of years ago, when they built on the bleachers down here.
Yeah.
And I don't believe we went to warrant.
Okay, well, it just, all of a sudden, it just rang up, and I
Some of you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I've got the policy here, I can read it to you.
No, that's all right, I just don't want us to walk into
Yeah, right, no, 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 better, better forewarned.
I have the policy, it says pursuant to RSA 198:200-B, gifts in the amount of 5,000 or more shall require the board to hold a public hearing regarding any actions to be taken. Gifts of less than 5,000, the board will post notice of the gift on, in the agenda, and will include a notice in the minutes. Acceptance of all gifts will be made in public session. The estimate's $3,500 for the cost of the construction?
Yeah, it's well within the, under the 5,000. The estimate's $3,500.
But that's the cost of construction, what's the actual value after construction? Is it less than 5,000?
That's what the value
$4,999.
Presumably it's $3,500.
It includes the construction and the materials.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So as long as it doesn't exceed 5,000, we can accept it in the meeting.
And I believe this is sufficient for public notice and acceptance.
That's what I was thinking, too.
I just didn't want us to walk into trouble.
No, 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 very good. Further discussion? All in favor? Anywhere, sorry? Okay. Public comment, too. Now, ladies and gentlemen, you saw that we had a interesting discussion about the policy. I would guess, when the policy committee reports back, some of this is going to be rehashed. I realize some of you have in your, the fire in your belly, you want to discuss it, and that is fine, but we would like to keep it polite and correct, let's put it that way. So, public comment, too, anyone wants to speak? You're shut, you're down, Cheryl, I'm sorry, no.
Do you want to speak?
No, 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 but you usually
Hi, Heather Ring, I'm Newton, New Hampshire. I just wanted to say thank you for accepting the Kingston baseball for the softball, and please buy your $20 scratch tickets, because you can win lots of money.
Yeah, I got charged 30 for that.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to gavel you on that, because that is government, you know.
I do appreciate the board's discussion of public comment, and I see no problem with going over the, the policy, I think that's a great idea. I also see that it's the chair's responsibility that if things get out of hand, the chair has to do that. And I, I hope that you won't keep a timer on, I, I couldn't find where that three minutes, I looked in the two policies that were quoted, I didn't see this three-minute time, was that a different policy?
BEDH, number one and two, page one.
Okay, I missed that, okay. But I, I, I agree with comments that, you know, the public is, is what we're all here for, the public is, you need their support, and I think the public needs the opportunity to speak within the guidelines and decorum.
Thank you. Sometimes you have to let people in. Okay, any other
I think you got one more, Pete.
Since I don't have a forum as a board
No, I'm glad you're doing this, because if you notice, that's what I made, Cory didn't want to, but I had made him do that, because you have, she's speaking now as Ellie Alessio, Kingston resident. Everybody know how that's, you see that done at the, at the deliberative session a lot? And that's how it has to be done, all right? So, yes, Mrs. Alessio?
Well, I want to share with you, I had a fabulous experience yesterday, it was one of the board members that participated in the interviews of the candidates for the assistant principal at both Bakersfield Memorial. There were 13 staff members there, and of the 13, two were parents, one from Kingston, one from Newton, the two principals, the young lady that student services, Jody, I don't remember her last name, and teachers, and paraprofessionals, and caseworkers from both schools. They conducted themselves outrageously fabulously, we had eight candidates to choose two from, and you'll be hearing more about it at a later time. But I was duly impressed, not only with our staff and how they conducted the interviews, but it was really exciting for me, as a resident of the Sanborn District, to hear how much talent was brought in to apply for two of our positions. You know how exciting that is, to have eight people who would do a fabulous job from different parts of the state, and they'd never met these people before? It was pretty exciting, they wanted to come to Sanborn, they loved some of the progressive initiatives that we had going, and I want to thank the staff for dedicating that much time. We started at noon time and didn't finish till almost seven last night. It was pretty thrilling, I, it's best, the best word I can use to describe it, Mr. Chairman.
Last chance. Ellie, I, I gotta tell you, other business is 8:45, so we've got to sit back for an hour.
Hey, you know, you're buying drinks. We got a rookie, we got to break it.
Okay.
I'd be willing to try, I can
I'm sorry, don't care. Where's your
Oh, God, I can remember meetings not too long ago where people wanted to kill each other. Now we're buying each other drinks. Okay, here we go. Anybody have anything for the next agenda? The superintendent and I, Jamie, just to let you know, what'll happen is, next Thursday, Tom and I will sit down and we'll set up the agenda sometime during the day, usually around 11:30. That's why you get it, I think it's five days before, so you usually get it Friday, and the meeting's Wednesday. If you have anything you want to put on the agenda, you give me a call. I prefer phone calls, I do know how to use a computer, well, I have an MCB at home, called Maria Collins Broderick, so she shows me how to do the things, all right? I just personally like discussion and outcome and whys, you know, makes it easier. But, you know, you give me a call, the policy pretty much says, you want somebody on the agenda, it goes on the agenda, all right? You may, you may have some resistance from me, because I don't like it, but that's okay, as we discuss things.
Yeah.
And then, it'll happen, so Thursday we'll come in, and we'll, we'll set it, and Phyllis does her magic. Does anybody have, other than the couple of things we talked about, you have one, you had one, I saw you first, but I'm gonna, Jim, go ahead, what you got?
I'd like, if this is possible, for the superintendent to give us a timeline on pursuing the, the mandate of warrant, warrant article eight, as far as when he can start the analysis of the plan, and sort of a timeline of, of where he expects to be with it at certain times
Okay.
and through the process, and what needs to be covered.
Which plan?
To, well, of the NASDAQ options
Oh.
to consolidate of those options with the elementary schools.
So, so I, I am planning, at the next board meeting, to present the slide deck with all the information regarding the movement of seventh and eighth grade to the high school facility, and sixth grade to the two elementary schools. That is not quite done
Okay.
and I don't know that I can prepare much more than that for the next meeting.
Okay.
But, but I think that the board needs to discuss, now that the, as I said earlier this evening, I, I'm going to flip this.
Yeah.
I need the board to discuss what the priorities or timeline will be, and direct me, in some ways, hopefully with consultation with me, about what we can realistically do regarding, I, I know that every, everyone's going to want to talk about, are we going to reorganize our elementary schools? So let's just put it on the agenda and talk about it, but I want to be careful, because there are two agenda items at the next board meeting that are going to be exceptionally time-consuming.
Okay.
One is the interviewing of up to four candidates for assistant principal, either three or four, so that'll take almost two hours. And then, the, the presentation of the slide deck, it's not small, it's a big slide deck, I'll be up there an hour, talking to you. And so what I would propose to the board, and just to help with the timeline a little bit, Jim, I'm, I'm, I propose to the board that I bring you the slide deck, the presentation on the first meeting in April, and then we have another public forum, the second meeting in May. Because there's a school vacation, and there's a few, I know that Ellie won't be here the first meeting in May, and she wants to be here for that, so the whole board will be here that second meeting in May. And so that'll also give the public a chance to read the slide deck and think about it, and come up with questions. And then the board needs to deliberate after that, either at that meeting or at the next meeting, as to whether or not they want to make a decision regarding the move of the middle school. I think that in terms of a timeline, we should do that first, and then have a conversation about the elementary schools. I just don't want to muddy the water, but if the board wants to discuss it sooner, you know me, I'm, I'll figure it out, we'll make it work.
So we've got the April 3rd meeting, right?
Yep.
Isn't there another meeting in April?
There is.
And that is, what, April 10th?
Yep.
Okay.
No, 7th.
No.
No, it's the 10th.
The 10th.
Well, when's the first?
You're off the 17th.
Third.
Right, we're not, there's no meeting on the 17th or the week of school break.
And then in May, we have, what are the dates in May?
The first and third May.
First and?
The first and third Wednesday in May, I'm sorry.
Okay, first and 15th?
Three and 10 in April.
I, I don't know, the, I can look for you.
So, on April
They are the first and the 15th, thank you very much.
On April 3rd, you're doing the, the middle school plan.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you want to have the public hearing on that, on what?
The middle of May.
Middle of May.
Well, the, the second meeting of May.
Why do you want to wait so long?
Oh, I, I didn't, I just knew, I happen to know that Ellie won't be here the first meeting in May, she's traveling, and so I think that she would like to hear
Yes.
the public comments.
That's a major, major[1753.54] That's a major, major, we should all be here if we can.
I mean, that's what I was going to ask with about the schedule. I do have a pre, uh, pre-reserved vacation for the fifteenth.
Of?
May.
Of May, okay.
So that'd be, I mean, is it possible to do it that third week?
Yeah.
When do you get back from Australia?
Uh, the tenth.
We can move it out a week.
Yeah, we, we, we-
So you leave the fifteenth, so we could go with the seventh, whatever the-
I, I can call a meeting for just maybe one item, or-
But, but E, we didn't-
Change a meeting from this Wednesday to the next Wednesday, we've done that. So as we get closer to it-
So you guys can work it out.
Pete and I work out a plan and present it in the next meeting.
But before you even worry about schedules.
Okay, but have you got the dates that they're not going to be here?
I do, and it'll be fine.
Okay.
We'll make that an agenda item at the next meeting.
Okay, so, just, just to finish this, we've got May first, May fifteenth, and then we have one meeting in June, I think, right?
Well, I think that, I, I just wanted to say that to all of you that, um, we do have, I need a policy-only meeting. So I was thinking about asking to do that, the, the second Wednesday, the third Wednesday, the second meeting that would have been in June, that we just have a massive policy, let's just get her done type, for lack of a better way to put it, just to get those policies done, because I don't think that it's realistic for you as a board to read all of the policies that are in the Ds and Es, and then the thirty-some-odd policies and the Js. And that's kind of why I was asking about that B policy, because I don't want to, we don't have, we've got a lot of policies to do. We have a lot of policies to do, they're big. And they're big ones about kids, the Js. So, so I would say that, that considering the, the gravity of the amount of work that we have to do, I may request a second meeting in June, but I don't need to do that today.
Yeah.
I can do that when we get closer.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I guess if we're, if we're sort of mapping out the next couple of months of meetings till our last meeting in June, we should probably not forget what Mrs. Gannon brought up about a meeting of goals, discussing goals.
Right, right.
Which is where I think some of the discussion on article eight should go, Jim, because, yes, it, the, I, I'm thankful to the voters for giving us the flexibility that we're going to need going down the road to tighten up the ship. But I'm here to tell you, I'm going to fight for our parents, because we need a lot of parent input. I don't want to be that first grade mother whose kid might be going to the next town. And we've got, we've got a lot to go through, and we need to set some, I want, I want a strategic planning session. I want us to, as a group, to say, okay, this is where we want to be in five years, and how do we get there in a rational, inclusive manner? Because we've got a lot of nervous parents out there, and we need to bring them in and help us make some of these decisions.
I'm all for that, I just want to see some sort of a timeline of how we're going to proceed.
And I think we should get that to the strategic-
And not just keep kicking it down the road.
And I agree with you, I don't want to keep kicking it down, we've got some hard decisions to make, but we got to-
I mean, facilities decisions have been kicked down the road for years.
That's why we're going to have some mess around.
The voters have told us they want us to deal with this, and I, I just want to get it going.
Okay. You, we're on the same page, you just, we got to find that right process so that we have a blueprint of how we want to progress.
I'm, I'm still feeling a little bit of excitement and, as I said earlier, kind of a little bit of shock that it passed. So I'm kind of, my schema for what's going to happen the next three or four years shifted dramatically last Wednesday. And I'm not saying that's negative, I just didn't expect it to pass the first year, so I'm excited.
Phyllis, how are we doing? We all set?
So, we're doing the, we're adding the school board comment, and then are we doing the timeline?
No, we're adding the school board comment to, to the agenda.
Discussion to the agenda.
And then the timeline?
Uh, well, there'll be, no, for the next meeting, I, I feel like we, we will be, if everyone's okay with it, um, we're going to talk about the interviews in the middle school move, and I'll probably have a non-public for you about some things. So I think for the next meeting, that will cover it. And then maybe at the next meeting, which is only a week later, we could begin the process of, of having this conversation. But it's really important for you all to know that I want, I want for our community to maintain the trust that we, as a board, and myself, have worked very hard to build for the last eighteen months. And the way that we're going to maintain that trust is to build a very clearly defined strategic plan that says, that addresses, I, I agree with you, Jim, I, I feel the same way about the seminary building.
Yeah.
The seminary building has been talked about for fifteen years.